Okay, we're good. I'm calling this meeting to order at 4:05 if you could stand with me in the pledge.
...to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. So before we get started, I want to let everyone know we do have a new board member, Sam Perrin, has been sworn in. Our other new board member, Susanna Buzell, was not able to attend tonight and has not been sworn in. So I'm going to open up to public comment. If there is any public comment, please come up and speak in the microphone. Seeing none, then I close public comment, so we will go on to the superintendent's report. Ryan?
Okay, thank you very much. Good afternoon, everyone. Thanks so much for all of you to be here. I'd like to recognize that we have a number of town officials that are here. I think that this is an incredible representation of how we in Goffstown and New Boston work together. We have Peter Georgiantis from the Select Board, Derek Horn, who is our town administrator. We've got both the Fire and Police Chief, Chief Serino and Chief Allard, as well as a couple of their first responders, so I'd like to thank all of them for being here. In addition to members of the public that we have here, all of our school administration is here because after this meeting concludes, we have work to do. I'd like to recognize the hard work of the entire administrative staff. They worked all last week and all day yesterday. We have been planning and preparing for what ultimately became the governor's declaration today, so I'll talk about that and then I'll talk about some of the next steps. I know that this is a time that people are incredibly anxious, not only from a health perspective, but given the fact that we're dealing with a global pandemic. People are thinking about what's going to happen to them financially, what's going to happen with their kids. So I think at this point, I would ask all of you, and I know that I have your continued support, but a measured, consistent tone, and we will all get through this together. I have complete confidence in our ability to work together for the greater good. So what I'm providing to all of you this evening, this afternoon, is really, this is going to be a couple different steps in the process. Let me provide a little bit of a technical overview for folks who may not be as familiar with how the governance of a school board works. This is the SAU Board. That is a board that's comprised of all the members of the Goffstown and New Boston School District. This is the board that has oversight of the SAU, SAU operations, and SAU policies. So pieces that I will speak to this evening pertain to the SAU Board, but more importantly, to the Goffstown School District and the New Boston School District. Those decisions cannot be made this evening. This board only has oversight of the SAU, but we use this framework often because the collaborative relationship between the Goffstown and New Boston School Boards, we work together. You all work together. And when we have work such as this that has shared implications, instead of having Goffstown meet tomorrow evening, New Boston Board doesn't meet until Wednesday, if Goffstown were to adopt something that New Boston hadn't had the opportunity to weigh in on, it's unfair and it's not good collaboration. So I appreciate that you were all able to make this work, and I know that you've all made sacrifices to be here, given the conditions and time away from your families. So I will try to be brief, but I want to make sure I go through this in enough detail and specificity that everyone's comfortable with. The first thing that you'll see here is I have developed an emergency operations plan for COVID-19 that I am asking the Goffstown and New Boston School Boards to adopt as a temporary regulation to address COVID-19 attached to Policy EBCF, which is Pandemic and Epidemic Emergencies. This document is on the website, so anyone watching on GTV or on YouTube Live, you can go to the SAU 19 website and you can see this for yourself and you can follow along. The first motion that I have is a motion that I would recommend both school boards adopt at your meetings this week. The next motion would be my request to authorize the superintendent or his designee to respond at his discretion to changing public health circumstances and to allow the superintendent the ability to modify or adapt SAU school board policy as needed to continue SAU services with an update provided at the next school board meeting. I think Mr. Talbot had a couple of changes to timestamp that. You don't have to make this motion yet or even discuss it. You might want to wait until I go through and provide a more extensive overview. I would also like to point out that all three boards have Policy BFE, which is Administration and Policy Absence. This grants the superintendent the power to act in the absence of policy. We are in uncharted times here, so I think it is important for everyone to recognize that certain provisions already exist within your existing policies. And I would also just like to point out that from an emergency management facilities perspective, our buildings are critical to all emergency operations in both of our towns. And I'm very grateful for the two chiefs to be here. And I would just point out that Mountain View Middle School is the emergency shelter for the community of Goffstown. Goffstown High School is a point of dispensing medication, a pod for the surrounding community. And New Boston Central School is the emergency shelter for the community of New Boston. We are committed. Anything that our first responders, our emergency operations partners need, our facilities are at your beck and call. Mr. Loring, our facilities director, and Dawn Tabor, our facility supervisor, are ready and willing to partner in any way that the greater community needs us. So I'd like to provide a little bit of an overview of the intent of this plan. And despite the fact that I don't like to read things that are on the screen, I'm not sure if everyone will have the chance to see what's on the screen behind me, so I'll read these into the record. "The intent of this plan is to provide accurate, timely COVID-19 information to the entire SAU 19 educational community. This plan is a framework for all members of the SAU 19 educational community to understand how we are responding to this constantly evolving public information about COVID-19." And by constantly evolving, it's by the hour. So you're all likely aware, and certainly all parents and staff members received voice messages from me today. Governor Sununu has ordered the closing of all schools in New Hampshire for the next three weeks and has directed us to move to a remote learning platform. We are ready to do that. We are ready to deploy that tomorrow. So at this point, I'm requesting authorization from the boards through approval of this temporary adoption of this plan as a regulation of Policy EBCF and authorize me flexibility to respond quickly to evolving and emerging circumstances. It's important to know that this framework is intended to be an evolving response plan that will change as situations change. I do want everyone to know that there are many elements of our planning that will not be publicly available. They will be held confidential for two purposes. The first would be, under RSA 91A32I, we are allowed for the following matters to be considered or acted on in non-public session, and that includes carrying out emergency functions, which all of these pieces that we're working on certainly do. The second piece that I would highlight, from an exemption perspective, is RSA 91A5, which has exemptions for governmental records from public disclosure as they pertain to carrying out emergency functions. So there are some pieces of our planning that the school board would have the ability to speak to in non-public session, and there will be certain pieces that the public will not be given access to. So I do want to be direct and clear about that. "I believe that we have a profound responsibility to balance the concerns within our community around COVID-19 and our schools with a studied, measured response based on current and accurate public health information. We have a profound responsibility to be honest and open and direct with those in our educational community who have compromised immune systems or other health factors. We're committed to schools being open and business as usual to the extent possible with the primary focus being on public health, and we are committed to minimizing the disruption to our students, families, faculties, and the community." I do recognize, and I'll speak more as I get into more of the details of this plan, that this is incredibly disruptive for everyone. Now, for families, this is disruptive. If they have young children, they have childcare, people may not be able to go to work, employers are going to be disrupted, our employees are disrupted, and just in general, we all need to take a deep breath, give ourselves the ability to be flexible, to be adaptive, and to be able to make our way through this. I do continue to identify that we will figure this out as we go, as all communities in New Hampshire will. So let me talk about our response plan. Number one, school operation status. I'm asking, and again, this document is for the Goffstown and New Boston Boards. This is not for the SAU Board. So I just want to provide an overview of this to allow board members any questions, to be able to talk it through, and if there are any changes that folks would like to see me make to this plan, now would be the time, or you take this, have the ability to read it, sort of distill it down, and then if you have questions for tomorrow night or for Wednesday, let me know either ahead of time or at the meeting, and we'll be able to respond to that. So at this point, I do want to point out that all of our schools will be closed at least for the next three weeks. I do think it's important for me to be direct that this could be longer, and I want everyone to go into this recognizing that the trajectory of the spread of this illness is such that we may likely be closed for the remainder of the school year. I'm not being an alarmist. I think of, all of you who know me, I'm not an alarmist, but looking at the trajectory of how this virus has spread in other countries and other locations, I would say with the exception of Singapore, Hong Kong, and I think Taiwan, the trajectory has really been concerning. So I don't want anyone to have illusions that this is going to be a three-week deal and then business returns to normal, everyone's back at school, and life just goes on, we reschedule the prom, everything's great. I don't think that that's going to be the case. So we are planning for this to be a three-week, short-term shutdown or change in operations, but I do want to be direct that this quite likely could be for the next several months or even longer. So at this point, all of our schools will be closed and we will be focusing on remote learning, but I do want to walk through a couple of different scenarios. The first scenario would be that schools are open. The second scenario is some schools are open, some schools may be closed with remote learning. So that as an example could be that the high school and middle school could be on a remote learning pathway, but the elementary schools may be in session. That's not now, but I'm trying to think about all the different scenarios and options as circumstances and public health information changes. Some or all of our schools could be partially open with restrictions and still have remote learning. This morning, the Commissioner of Education, Frank Ettleblow, who has worked really hard to be available to superintendents, I'd like to thank him for his availability for us to contact him if we had questions. He's worked really hard to be available to support the field. He had said that there could be a possibility that some services might happen in schools in small groups or individual settings, even though the schools remain closed and we are on a remote learning trajectory. So as things continue to evolve, there are a number of different circumstances that would potentially be available to us. And again, part of the reason I'm asking for the authorization that I am of both respective boards is this thing continues to change on a daily and hourly basis. We have no idea, and from a policy perspective, we will never be nimble enough from a board perspective to be able to respond to the changing circumstances. So that's part of my rationale for this whole model. Schools closed. At this point, that's not where we're at. Schools are closed with a remote learning program. Now, I do want to just talk a little bit about remote learning. The State Board of Ed approved a temporary emergency rule last week, which is a modification to ED 306.18A7, and this is a part of what's called the minimum standards in the state of New Hampshire. And this allows school districts to create a plan where we can move to a remote learning model. This does not need to be electronic. It can be analog, paper and pencil, and we're providing options for both pathways. Academic work shall be equivalent in effort and rigor to typical classroom work, and there needs to be an assessment of all student work for the day. These are the requirements in the rule, as all of our administrators, our teachers, and our support staff work to make this operational for our kids. As I stated earlier, we will be ready for deployment tomorrow. There's a consideration that I did want to highlight right away. As we move to a remote learning platform, the high school and middle school grading for the entire duration that we are on remote learning will be pass/fail, and class rank and the impact on class rank is suspended. So to give teachers flexibility and to not have the pressures associated with a changing educational delivery system, we are making that change. I'd like to speak about special education. During this time, I think some of our most vulnerable students who need the most support and their families will be impacted more greatly than a lot of other people. So I do fully recognize and appreciate how incredibly disruptive this whole set of circumstances will be to our special education students. Dr. Dolof and her team are working hard to think about how we can support students, and we are, again, in the planning periods associated with that. When educational services, even when they're remote, are provided to regular education students, special education students are also required. And there's a document that the US DOE released just last week called Questions and Answers on Providing Services to Children with Disabilities during the COVID-19 or COVID coronavirus disease 2019 outbreak. So that's one of the many pieces of technical assistance and guidance that we're receiving. This from the US DOE. The New Hampshire Department of Education has released information, and Dr. Dolof is working hard to come up with contingency planning for our special education students. So at this point, I do think it's fair to say that special education compliance will be impacted. You're all likely aware that there are very specific requirements for timing, for calendar dates and compliance that go along with special education. I fully expect that school districts across the state of New Hampshire and likely across the country will struggle to meet timelines and compliance deadlines. One of the pieces that is an important consideration for me is the role of technology resources and access for all families. I'm going to speak to that below. Remote learning equivalency. Again, I will be nothing but direct and straightforward with all of you. This will not be equivalent to kids being in school for six or six and a half hours a day. Remote learning is in no way ever going to be a replacement for a trained, dedicated, professional educator in all of the services and supports that exist within our schools. This is not equal. It's as good as we're going to be able to do, given the declaration from the governor, but I don't want to give anyone the illusion that this is somehow going to be six hours of magical instruction every day for every child K through 12 or preschool through 12. I am not a believer and supporter of an online or remote platform for elementary children. I think that developmentally, it's not the right approach. High school and middle school has a lot more flexibility, and our teachers are considerably more accustomed to running a hybrid dual-platform type model, but for our young children, thinking about kids that need support all day long, this will not be an equivalent substitution. And I do just want to be really honest and direct about that. Student and family contact and communication expectations. The administrators have been working on this. I want teachers to stay in touch with their students. I want our professional educators to be able to support our kids, to be able to talk to them. There are a lot of logistical challenges to this, and there are a lot of things that make me nervous about this, but we're working on them. It's really just critically important to me in the delivery of educational programming that we have kids that stay connected and engaged with their teachers. And by the way, teachers are going to be heartbroken by this. Most teachers are going to be heartbroken by this. A lot of teachers are really into online learning, and this will be something that will really kind of excite them, and this will be a whole new level of energy and pedagogy for them to be able to think about teaching differently, delivering services differently. But for particularly our elementary teachers, they do this because they want to be with little kids all day long, and now they're going to be not able to do that. So I do think that this is going to be hard for many of our educators. At this point, there is a profound impact on support staff with a remote learning model. I am asking both boards and the SAU Board to continue to pay all of our support staff. They will be working tomorrow and into next week. I don't know what that'll entirely look like. All of this is being determined as we speak, but given the considerable impact that people not taking a paycheck will cause on families in our communities, I am asking that we still pay our people. Right now, they are working, they will be working. I don't know what that'll look like in another week. We may not be able to have staff in the buildings in another week. I have no idea. But I am deeply committed to all of our great support staff in Goffstown and in New Boston who work so hard for all of our schools. And I say it all the time, we cannot run our schools without these people. And I am committed to them, and I hope the boards will be as well. School calendar. I'm seeking authorization to be able to modify the calendar at my discretion to implement this regulation. I'm not looking to do anything overly drastic. I don't have anything in the plans right now, but I need flexibility. So it could be that days get swapped, get modified. We could have remote learning that happens to replace part of April vacation. There's a lot of different scenarios that could happen. The governor and the commissioner in their press conference today were silent on whether... The governor said all schools will be closed for three weeks, and he said next week educators are to get ready for remote learning and ready to go live the following week. We're not going to wait a week. We're going to go live tomorrow. I'm committed to that. Our administrators are committed to that, and our teachers are committed to that. I do want to say that I'd like to thank the leadership of all of our associations. Many of them are here this evening. We've worked closely with them. Kate McGrath has been in constant contact with our leadership from the teachers' associations in both towns, and I'd like to thank all of them for their support to being flexible to make this happen for our kids. At this point, a remote learning plan does not likely change the last day of school. So I don't want anyone to think that we're going to have to go to school until August or something like that. This plan would not change the end of the school year. And just to be clear, for remote learning, any day that remote learning occurs counts as a school day. School attendance and participation have to be documented. There was a requirement in the ED rule prior to the emergency change last week that required an 80% participation rate. That has been removed. So if we are offering remote learning and we are keeping track of who's participating and we're measuring and evaluating that learning, it counts as a school day. At this point, doesn't really pertain, but as I've shared with the greater community, it's incredibly important to me that parents have discretion and choice for whether or not kids are coming to school when schools are open. We have a lot of kids that have compromised immune systems. We have family members of those children that have medical complications, and I did share with all of our families, as we've communicated through this, that we support their decisions. I told families last week, if they kept kids home because they had concerns for medical reasons, that those days would be waived. So there are a lot of requirements in policy and statute around compulsory school attendance. So again, these are all the kinds of examples of why I'm seeking this flexibility as we navigate through these uncharted waters. It is also important that in addition to policy, our school handbooks may need alterations or changes, and those things are being worked on as we speak. Transportation. At this point, we do not have a need tomorrow. We will not have buses rolling, but I do plan that we may have transportation requirements in different ways. So I've asked for authorization to provide transportation as needed to implement this plan. I'll give an example. In the city of Manchester, they're going to have school buses delivering food, and they're going to have school buses delivering remote learning packets and picking work up. I'm not saying we're going to do either one of those things, but I want to use all of the assets and resources that we have as circumstances change and evolve over time. I do also want to point out that both our bus contracts with Goffstown Truck Center and with Durham require a 30-day notice to suspend services. So at this point, we will be required to continue to pay our bus contract. Mr. Gross can certainly answer any questions. We are required to put them on notice if we want to suspend that service. This is something that we may want to think about, give board members some time, because we don't want to cancel services or postpone services and then have schools open in three weeks and we go back to running school bus service, and now it's been disrupted. But I do want people to know that contractually, that's a factor I wanted you to be aware of. Access to our buildings. We will minimize exposure and the possibility of community transmission, and we will restrict public access to schools and the SAU office, and I'm asking for authorization to develop expectations and protocols. We will have information available on the website, or parents are encouraged to call the school office or the SAU if they want to make contact. I recognize that some students may have materials that they need to pick up at school. That could be younger children that might have left something in their desk that they need, maybe that retainer that accidentally got brought to school, or we may have high school kids that need to come in and get something from their locker. If that's the case, I'm asking you contact the school office, and we will make arrangements for that. Public gatherings. Public gatherings will be reviewed on a case-by-case basis, but at this point, with the exception of this particular meeting that has a large number of people in it, we will cancel all public gatherings. Athletics, all co-curriculars at this point are canceled, field trips, anything of that nature are all canceled. Individuals with illness or exposed to potential illness. I already have the authority under statute to remove students on staff due to illness, but I'm, again, just making it clear. RSA 200:39 allows me to remove students who have any symptoms of contagion or hazards or have any medical issues that would be concerning for us, and we already have that ability for all of our employees. Public expectations and modifications may be needed based on changing recommendations from public health officials. That would include things like illness exposure, disclosure, expectations, if people who have illness or symptoms, travel, all those kinds of pieces. We would want the ability to request disclosure and to work with people to make sure we can keep everyone safe. This is not going to be a time where parents can give their kids a spoonful of Motrin to keep the fever down and send them to school. This is way beyond that. And so I'm not saying I'm doing this, but if schools were open, I may require kids to be fever-free for a longer duration of time than current policy, practice, or handbooks specify. So instead of 24 hours fever-free, I may need that to be 48 or 72 or some other number based on information from public health officials. We're working on social distancing expectations. We have not done this yet, but we will. They will be established and implemented. Restrictions. I'm asking for authorization to create and enforce restrictions for students, staff, and community members to be on our campuses. and community members to be on our campuses. I don't know what those may be, but I'm looking for the authorization to be able to respond quickly. Facilities management. Policy KF. This is our community use of school facilities suspended until further notice. This will impact many organizations in our community. We have been in touch, Mr. Gross has been in touch with Rick Wilhelmi from Parks and Rec. I've communicated with Mike Sendoni from New Boston, who's our rec director. They have suspended all their programs at this point. I don't think there are any, and Pete, if there's any updates you guys have, or Derek. I think that all Parks and Rec-type programs are suspended. I know that New Boston Recreation has suspended everything, but there are other groups that meet here. So that would be everything from the Goffstown Republicans Group to the Girl Scouts to any number of organizations. Mr. Loring would tell you that our facilities are used seven days a week, all the time. All of those access requests are being suspended. Family considerations. So as I already mentioned, this is going to have a lot of complications for family, not the least of which is childcare. Parents making difficult decisions, do they go to work? Do they leave their child home alone? I do have great fears that children who are maybe not quite ready to be home alone will be left alone. Older kids will be helping and taking care of younger kids. This is going to create significant childcare struggles for many of our families. If you have high school kids, this isn't really going to impact you. You have elementary kids or even middle school kids, this is a significant impact on families. Other things that are troubling for families.
Hang on one second. Rheta's phone just died. She's going to call in in a few minutes. She just texted me.
Okay.
When she calls, just answer.
No, we still have a quorum. We're going to keep going. We miss you, Rheta. You'll catch up.
She'll call back.
Yeah. So let me talk about families that are... Rheta?
Yes.
That was quick.
That was quick.
Let me talk about families that are food insecure. We feed our entire community, or we offer every single day breakfast and lunch. Megan Bizarro, our outstanding food service director who's in the back, has worked with me, has worked with Scott, and we have reached out to. Megan has met with the Goffstown Network, who provides as our local food bank provider to work with any families that are in need. The state of New Hampshire has applied for a waiver from the feds to be able to provide meals to families in need. We don't have a lot of details on that, and Megan had shared with me. Again, information changing as quickly as it possibly can and does. We're not really sure the status of that. The state has applied for it. But irrespective, we are looking to work with the Goffstown Network to be able to provide supplemental nutrition to any families in need. To that end, we have created a confidential voicemail box that has been established for Goffstown and New Boston families to request support for food insecurity. I'm going to read the number. This confidential voicemail box will only be accessed by Megan Bizarro, who already has all of the information that we process for free and reduced lunch. And Megan will work really hard with the network and with whatever opportunities we may have to make sure that our citizens in need, our families in need, will be taken care of. I would also say during this time that if there are families that might be eligible for free and reduced lunch, we have a lot of families that are incredibly proud and don't ask for help, even though they might be eligible. This may be a time to rethink that. And any families that might consider their eligibility for free or reduced meals, I would please ask them to contact Megan Bizarro. And they could do so at that number that I just provided. Internet-enabled devices and internet access. I think we all assume that everyone is connected, everyone has multiple devices in their homes, and they all have access to computers, devices, and internet. That's not the case. I think the majority, and certainly a large majority of our families, that's true. But for any families that don't have access to either a device or internet connectivity, I'd like to offer support in that regard. If there are families that may be in need of a device but have internet access, I don't know what our availability to provide that is, but I'd like to offer parents to contact us. We have created a second confidential voicemail box, and this number is 603-660-5489. And this is a number that people can call. This will be monitored and tracked by Mr. Borget, our IT director. I don't know what we can do, but if we have devices that we can loan to families, that we can sign out, whether they're an older laptop, or it might be a Chromebook or something of that nature, if there are families that are in need, we're going to work really hard to make sure that they have access to those devices. Comcast is offering free internet essentials for 60 days for low-income families. So if you don't have internet, there are a number of resources that you might be able to access for low cost or free service. So that website is, I think if people were to reach out to Comcast, they could be directed, but I did provide it in the document if people wanted to access that. So it's a 60-day free internet connection for families who qualify. Families may also be able to access internet and computers at local public libraries. Again, there's a lot of fluidity here, and I have not spoken with Selectman Georgantis or with Derek Horn. I don't know if our libraries intend to remain open, but at this point, that might be an option. And for any families that need it, we will provide paper and pencil or so-called analog options for remote learning. Again, there will be as much equivalence as we can. It's going to be really hard for our teams to replicate and create multiple platforms, but recognizing that many families may not have the ability to have a device, to have a network, that we will provide paper and pencil to people. We will mail them to you if you need to. We can have people drop them off, pick them up in the office. I do want to say that I don't have a lot of detail on this, and I would look to our public health officials, but there may be some concern about the possibility of contamination of materials. I do know that's something that will be on folks' minds. At this point, again, not being alarmist, just trying to be a realist and trying to identify all the variables that we can touch. For any families that would like to request paper and pencil materials, we have created yet another, this is the last one, I promise, no more voicemail boxes. But we have a voicemail box that's been established for you to request paper and pencil. And that number is 603-660-5488. And at this point, all three of those mailboxes have been set up. They are operational, and anyone who calls, that information will be directed to the right person. It will be processed, and we will make sure that we take care of that for you. For the calls about food insecurity, Megan Bizarro will be the only one who receives that. For requests for technology support, Mr. Borget will be the person who receives that. And for paper and pencil, that will be recorded at the SAU office and then distributed to each of the respective schools. As we think about these times of disruption, I would like to recommend families maintain as much normalcy in their schedule as they can. I saw my 15-year-old very briefly today, but I warned him to get ready to start reading a whole lot more and put the devices down. And we're going to make sure that kids are going to bed at a reasonable time, they're getting up at a reasonable time, and that we have as much normalcy and routines. I'm encouraging people to have established bedtimes, wake-up times, encourage exercise, wellness, creative pursuits. This might be a great new chance to try something you haven't done before. Start painting, start playing the tuba, whatever you're into. This is a chance for you to do it and not just have... My fear is that we're going to have kids that are already, who are already on devices way too much, beyond even more. So I really want parents to think about, as we enter into this new time, to make it really clear straight away from the beginning, you're not sleeping until noon time, you're going to get up, you're going to do schoolwork, you're going to read, you're going to have routines. And I just can't emphasize enough, and I'm sure that my two teenagers will really enjoy this. I would encourage parents to have scheduled time that they work on remote learning and read, read, and then read some more. So this would be a great time for people to be able to engage with a number of great print materials. Number two, communication methodologies. Our website has been updated, and we've added new information, and we'll continue to expand upon that for COVID-19. Feel free to go to the SAU website, resources are there. Likely, most parents are already aware, but we have an alert notification system called School Messenger. Parents can receive voice, email, and text messages. I always encourage everyone to sign up for all three. There are things that I will send out quickly as an email, but there are other things that I want to do as a voice message because I'm conveying more information. And then, lessons learned from the Boston bombing. There are times where you cannot make cell calls, voice calls, but SMS or text messages go through. So that was something that we absolutely all experienced during the day of the Boston Marathon bombing. So it is important that parents sign up for all three, and there's information on our website of how to do that. We will continue to use video as a primary communication tool. This evening after this board meeting, I plan to go into the GTV studio to record an update for families of what they can expect as we move to remote learning. It's too much for people to get a three-page paper, but if I can do it in a three-minute video or a little longer, it's just a powerful communication tool that we will continue to use. Information will be provided on social media through Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram. Conference calling is a tool that we have established and have set up that we can use potentially for remote learning. We can use it for professional meetings. I had a great inquiry from a parent today who questioned why we were having a meeting that was a public meeting. And I appreciate the sentiment. We are required to have public meetings in public, with the public being able to attend. So we could not restrict the public. So at this point, I think this may be something, and Dan, you may have some thoughts on this, our government is not really set up for this. We could not do this meeting on the phone if we wanted to legally. We have to have a quorum of the board physically present for us to be able to conduct this meeting, even though we have a few members who are participating on conference call. Video conferencing is definitely in the stages of infancy with us, but it's something that Mr. Giralliman and Mr. Borget have worked hard to put in place, and I suspect that we'll be utilizing that, in good old-fashioned US standard mail. So for any of our families that need paper and pencil, we will mail them packets, we will give them self-addressed stamped envelopes to return work to us. We will use that methodology as we need to. And lastly, for contingency planning, I would say extensive contingency planning is in place. We're deeply committed to keeping the SAU open and fully operational. We are a large employer. We have over 600 employees. So everything from questions about people being paid, paychecks, benefits, healthcare, there's a lot going on, and we will do everything we can to not only support our kids, but to support all of our employees. So at this point, that really is a pretty comprehensive overview of the authorization and request that I will be seeking from the Goffstown and New Boston boards for consideration at your meetings this week. And I'd be happy to provide any clarification or answer any question that any board members may have.
Alan?
There is here a request for a school board motion from the SAU board. So do you want us to make that motion?
If no one else has any questions, does any other board members have a question? Bill?
I just have one question. So how are parents notified about what to do for the remote learning? I didn't hear that on the message, and I haven't heard it.
Yeah, so what I said on the message after the governor closed schools, I said that parents can expect that there will be a video posted this evening that will give some more detail. I will say that what it looks, what remote learning looks like in the beginning stages is probably not as elegant and sophisticated and robust as what it will look like a little ways down the road. So I would ask for people to be a little flexible, because if we wanted, we could wait, according to the governor, I could wait all next week and roll this thing out a week from tomorrow. I don't want to do that. I want to roll this out tomorrow. I want our educators to be plugging away at this, and I want families to have kids engaged with learning. I think you all know, I am a guy who doesn't think the school year should be shorter. It should be longer. The school day should be longer, not shorter. So having less instruction, less contact is really not something that I'm going to support. And again, from an equivalency perspective, I recognize that remote learning will not be the same as person-to-person, but we're going to do the best we can to make it as robust as we can, recognizing that there are a lot of factors that families are going to have. Kids might have to share devices. There could be multiple kids in the same home that have to share devices. You've got kids providing childcare. There's just a lot of factors that are going to go into all this. But at this point, Bill, we're going to get something out to families this evening. I'm going to do a video, and I'll send it out, and we'll put it on, we'll put it on social media, we'll put it on the websites to let parents know what they can expect. So when we wrap up here, our administrators are going to, they've been working on this, like I said, all day yesterday and the majority of last week, will have an overview that I'll be ready to provide tonight, and more information will be forthcoming in the days and weeks ahead.
Dan, you had a question?
For regular education, I can see where we have a lot of students who are progressing at the same rate. And so it might be the same content that I'm trying to envision how this is going to work. And our special education classes, where you have more unique circumstances of individual students, not, how does that look when you have one teacher in more than one student?
Sure. So I would say the majority of our students with special education needs, probably somewhere in the 90% range or so, spend most of their time in regular education, inclusionary type settings. So the regular education teacher, the content area specialist, will design those remote learning tools, and then it'll be the role of our special educators to adapt, to modify, to provide supplemental supports. It could be changing reading level, it could be changing how kids are going to be assessed. There's a lot of accommodations and modifications. And the other piece in terms of our support staff, I see our special education paraprofessionals continuing to have a significant role in remote learning. Kids are going to need help. Kids are going to need the ability to say, "I don't get this." They're going to need pre-teaching, they're going to need reteaching. And if that's a paraprofessional on the phone with a child or their family and providing support or creating documents that get emailed to a child or posted on a website, all of those kinds of things, we're going to have to think about, Dan. Again, I do not think this will be equivalent. As I look around the room and I see a couple of great special educators from New Boston here, Mrs. Worsniak and Mrs. Jones, we've got a pair of professionals out here, it's not going to be the same as being with a dedicated, caring educator. But we're going to do the best we can, and it is possible that we're not able to replicate some of those services. And to that end, we would be looking at providing compensatory services. I don't know at this point exactly what that's going to look like, but that's very consistent with the message that the commissioner has given.
Jared, Ginny, which one?
I'll go first.
Oh, go ahead, Jared.
Just a question. I know we've talked about our students and the needs of the students. I just want to make sure that our faculty and we have understanding. Are our faculty going to be within the school systems, or are they also going to be remotely accessing some of that information? And I hope that we do have members of the faculty that will come up during public session to provide impact or either support or their thoughts about the policies that are being outlined right now as well.
So the status of our faculties is tomorrow, they will all be in. So all of our teachers, our support staff, will all be in school tomorrow. They will be working really hard to design remote learning opportunities. With the first day of remote learning, I have asked to be deployed by 1:00 P.M. Again, if remote learning occurs, it counts as a school Again, if remote learning occurs, it counts as a school day. If we did not have remote learning happening tomorrow, it would not count as a school day. Even if I had faculty in, that time would have to be made up. Now, it's possible, the governor closed schools for three weeks and gave us a week to do it. I don't know if we might get a waiver for these five days. They did not say anything to that, they didn't speak to that. Is it possible that we provide these five days and then those are five days that might not need to be done at the end of the school year? I don't know. Remember, you do have a superintendent who thinks the school year should be longer. So the likelihood that five days gets waived is probably pretty unlikely, but who knows? So as of right now, our faculty will be in. If we receive guidance from public health officials that we should not have our faculty in, we will make that adjustment. This is a massive shift and they really are going to need to be together. I will encourage Mr. McBride, Mrs. McCann to think about, the high school staff is huge. So when we say no gatherings over 100 people, that's kind of guidance that's being given. Their faculty is over 100 people. So they will likely break up by department, by grades, however they decide to do it. So we'll make sure that we have as much social distancing as we can. From a supplies perspective, we have plenty of soap, plenty of paper towels, hand sanitizer, cleaning equipment. All that is being taken care of. Mr. Loring and Ms. Tabor have done a great job making sure that our schools are being cleaned and disinfected consistent with CDC guidelines and recommendations. But they're going to be in for now and I don't know how long that'll be able to continue. If it can continue, terrific. Educators are going to do better when they're in their classrooms, have access to their supplies, their equipment, they can work collaboratively. I think that the, the learning opportunities for kids will be better. But from a public health perspective, I don't want to bring people in if it's not safe to do that. So if we find out in a few days or a few weeks that we shouldn't have our faculty in, then again, this is the flexibility and the nimbleness of the plan to be able to change people's expectations, allow for more remote working and other supports of that nature.
Ginny, you had a question?
This is probably a question that's way too early to ask, but special ed students that require OT, PT, speech services down the line?
So it's, yeah, and in fact, I, I might ask Dr. Dolph to come up and speak to that, but, and maybe just sit tight for a sec, Jen, let me see if I can address it. But they're, they're working on this. So Jen already has contingency planning for speech, for OT, for PT. Those are highly specialized, individualized services that aren't going to lend themselves to a packet being put in a menela, envelope and sent to a family. I think Jen has some ideas about how groups might happen. We could do speech and language, expressive language groups on a conference call. We might be able to, you know, do some other things creatively and remotely. Disruption creates the opportunity to innovate. This may be a little more innovation than I might hope for, but I think at this point, we're going to have to try to figure out how to do those services. And as I shared at the beginning, when we think about the operational status of our schools, the commissioner has said that even though schools are closed, we may be able to run some of those small group special ed services where kids are, who aren't, you know, ill, who don't have risk factors, may still be able to come in and be able to receive some of those services from their caring, dedicated educators.
Alan?
Just a quick question about how much time a day with the remote learning or even the paper pencil packets? Are, are the kids expected to be involved in that activity a day?
That's a, a really good question. I would say that we're probably not quite ready to answer that, Alan. The beginning may look different than what it looks like after we've rolled this out in a little more detail. It will not be equivalent. So we will not be expecting a five-year-old child or a six-year-old child to be sitting down and doing hours and hours worth of work. So where this, let's say if the average school day is six hours, it will not be six hours. And I don't know that I'd even be able to timestamp it to you, but some of what our talented administrators are preparing, it might be, here are a number of activities or projects and then you need to read for 45 minutes and write for a half an hour about what you read and submit the journal. So a, a lot of those kinds of things are really still being developed. I don't want to give anyone the illusion that we are a district that was ready to implement remote learning. We are not. Many school districts have gone the direction of providing one-to-one devices for all of their kids and doing things like Google Classroom where the primary instructional delivery methodology might be on a screen or an electronic format. We have not gone that route and that is purposely, that's intentionally, and that has to do with our collective ideological belief that paper is still a good thing, kids interacting with books, being in groups and, and not promoting more screen time. And really, and Mrs. McCann would be the one to come up and speak to this, but the research of outcomes really hasn't supported a move to those more aggressive online platforms. But that means for us, the learning curve is a little more challenging, but we are working really, really hard. And again, people have been working day and night, you know, for days to get ready to do this. So in terms of hours, I, I don't know that I could tell you time, but you know, I, I would hope and expect that it would take kids a couple hours at least, recognizing that it's going to look different from first graders to kids that are taking AP Calculus and, you know, higher, you know, more robust courses. So it, it, it'll look different.
I don't know what we already have in our schools regarding remote learning. I know there are programs out there that a school district can purchase. Teachers can assign children a seat in that platform, I guess you'd call it, and the kids can get on. And everything they do and all their assessments, the teacher can see immediately and to see the child's progress for lack thereof. Do we need to approve funding if we need to purchase those things?
Well, again, if, if the boards are, are in alignment with my thinking, if you adopt the plan that I've presented you with, you would give me the authority that if a principal or principals at a great, you know, a, a school level said, we'd really like to purchase this platform and that this is how we're going to use it, I would have the ability to authorize that. So we do use some of those platforms. Edmentum comes to mind, something that isn't called Play-Doh anymore, but there are different platforms that we already use and utilize. Some of those could be expanded. I do know, back to the question about things like speech and language, there are speech and language online type programs and assessments that we could purchase. So I, I think we're going to have to, you know, really get into this before we truly figure out what some of our needs are going to be. And yes, I think that there will be things that we have costs of, again, the budget process, right? We all talk about the budget process and I told Scott to take March off and we'll start next year's budget in April. But we're, we're developing budgets 18 months in advance. 18 months ago, when we, you know, when we were developing the current year's fiscal budget, we had no idea that we were going to be dealing with a pandemic. You know, inherently, that's why we need flexibility in the ability to move our resources, to prioritize things financially, because sometimes we just have no idea what we, what we might be up against.
Are there any other questions from any board members? Go ahead, Rob.
Is, does the, are this, does the, does the staff have ample technology to, to work remotely at this point? Or is this something that we need to work on at this point?
Professional staff?
Yes.
Absolutely have sufficient resources to work remotely. Support staff, I, I would say would not.
Okay, Tim?
And then, since tomorrow is the go-live with this, I know that you had reviewed the confidential mailbox for, say, Megan Bizarro that she'll be heading up. What are we doing to make sure that the children that may be in a food insecure situation starting tomorrow? What are we doing now to make sure that they'll be taken care of?
Well, the first thing, and, and again, if, if a family has limited resources, I recognize that they might not have the ability or the access to be watching this meeting. They may not be able to access this document. But those phone numbers that I shared, I, I would hope that anyone who in our community who recognizes a family that might need support to reach out to that number, to get to Megan, and we will do anything and everything we can to help those families straight away. And again, we're, we're so fortunate to have the Goffstown network because I, I think people are all aware, but they created a weekend food program. They provide backpacks full of food for the better part of, I think, 70-something kids at this point. Families are getting backpacks every single week with food and nutritional supplements. So certainly those families are already connected to us. Megan knows these families. They are quick to reach out to her if they need support. So I, I do encourage any families that might have any food insecurity to contact Megan and we'll provide them with any support we can.
Perfect.
You have another question?
Another question, more of a comment, just for all of our listeners, when we talk about additional purchases that might be necessary, they have to be within our current appropriation. We're not asking for any special additional appropriation or go into the contingency funding. It's within that and I would expect Scott would be coming to A&amp;F and to the full board for Goffstown for any transfers that might need to be made to fund anything if they were to occur.
Good clarifier. Thank you, Dan.
Okay, so if there's no other questions, I, I am going to call for a motion, but I want everyone to realize we have three board members on conference, so I need to take a roll call. That means each of you needs to say yes. We have Wendy Lambert, Retta Jaffe, and Janelle O'Brien on conference. So if we're good, Jared, you have another question?
No.
Okay, I like to hear a motion.
I would like to make a motion based on the governor's remarks and actions taken today that closing the schools starting tomorrow, March 16th, not to reopen until March 3rd at the earliest. That we authorize the superintendent or his designated to respond at his direction to changing public health circumstances and to allow the superintendent the ability to modify or adopt or adapt SAU school board policy as needed to continue SAU services until the next regularly scheduled SAU board meeting.
Do you mean April 3rd?
April 3rd, thank you.
Is that good? Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Tim. Okay, I'm going to do a roll call. Tim?
Yes.
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 You forgot to ask if you had any further questions.
I'm sorry, we have any further questions?
Hold on to them.
Well, we already started voting, but you, you did April 3rd, which is not the next regularly scheduled SAU board meeting.
No.
So...
April 3rd is the...
The three weeks.
The three weeks.
And so in order to go past April 3rd with this vote, we're going to have to have another SAU board meeting to, to give him the authority past that.
No, no, my remarks, for, for clarification, my remarks were directly to what Governor Snunu gave us.
Right.
And that this motion...
Which is the next three weeks.
Is that to continue the SA services until the next regularly scheduled board meeting, which at this time is April 15th.
SAU board meeting.
SAU.
So what was the April 3rd?
That is when the governor says that at the earliest we can resume in-class schools.
Okay, so that piece was April 3rd?
Yes.
Yes.
Wendy?
Yes.
Janelle?
Yes.
Retta?
Yes.
And yes. So motion passed, very unanimous.
Thank you.
Okay, so I'm going to open up again to public comment if anybody would like to speak to anything that we've heard today. We can do one at a time. Come on up, Lynn.
Just encourage them to name and address.
Yeah. At the microphone.
But don't touch the microphone.
So I just need you to state your name and address for the record and then just keep your comment under three minutes.
Okay. Lynn Worsniak, Nine Davis Lane in New Boston. I have a couple of questions, one as a parent of multiple students and as an educator in the district as well. First, the mom hat. I am curious, I can see how everything will play out for two of my three students, but I also have a student at MST taking a math embedded course. So if we need that math credit for a graduation requirement, how does that play out? And then, I'm curious, as an educator, we're told that we are only supposed to be utilizing and accessing vetted websites that the school district has vetted. And there's lots of websites that are now offering free access that may be able to support something like a Wilson program for specialized reading instruction or things like that, that are newly available as resources. What about the option of being able to, there's a lot of good back and forth that can come by having students on Google and using a Google Doc because you can have live time...
We already use Google Docs, but, yeah.
But live with our kids right now in instruction, so thank you and I'll wait for my answer.
All right, thank you, Lynn. Did you want to answer?
Yeah, we, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interject there, Lynn. We typically would not respond to questions, but I do want to share that where Mr. Gross has been working with a group to develop a frequently asked questions document for parents and for educators. So those documents will, I think Lynn had some good questions. I did not mention MST and I should do so. I apologize, I should have included that in, in my presentation. MST is the Manchester School of Technology. We have students who attend vocational programs in the city of Manchester at MST, they're a vocational high school. At this point, they are also closed and I have no idea what the plan is for MST. I will reach out to Superintendent Goldheart this week. He and I do speak periodically. I will see if we can get some information. I'm sure that Mrs. Lewis and Mrs. McCann are probably already working on figuring that out. But again, how do you replicate an automotive, you know, automotive class or a welding class in a remote learning environment? Not well. Not well. So the, good questions. And in terms of, Lynn was speaking about the requirements under House Bill 1612, which requires us to develop data privacy, security, and data governance planning. We, she's right, we cannot use a website that hasn't gone through a third-party vendor authentication process. Mr. Borget will do everything we can. And if we need to make decisions to allow educators to move a little more quickly than the typical vetting process happens, we'll evaluate that as we go.
Is there any other public comment? Sure.
Hi, I'm Jelissa Boclear from, I live at 267B Black Brook Road. And I'm a student here at high school, uh, Goffstown High School. And I was curious, what are you expecting us to do tomorrow? When, like, we log on to what website to do what?
Hours and hours of homework.
I know, but like, where are we going?
High school, you guys have no idea how many hours of, I'm, I'm kidding.
Don't beat her up.
At, at this point, what, again, a little more information will be provided later, but I've asked the, the schools to have information that will likely go out tonight or tomorrow morning with more details and that the first remote learning opportunities will be available sometime around 1:00 PM tomorrow. I think the high school, I had, again, instead of taking the week to plan for this in the, in the interest of getting this up and running more quickly, I encouraged the high school to think about an English assignment for tomorrow. Is that the direction, Mrs. McCann?
Yes.
Okay. So tomorrow, you're, you're going to have, every student at Goffstown High School has to take an English class. So the first remote learning assignment tomorrow will be an English assignment.
So are we getting different assignments each day, like one day math assignment, one day English? Like, how is this going?
Yeah, we're, we haven't really worked... All good questions.
Yes, all good questions.
All good questions. We're, we, we still don't have this fully identified at this point, but we will be working tomorrow and Tuesday and Wednesday and we will keep working away at this. But tomorrow, you will be getting an English assignment. Every student at Goffstown High School and, and Mountain View. So the focus for students at the middle school and high school tomorrow will be English assignments.
Okay. And if, like, students have questions on the classroom, how will we be able to contact our teachers?
Yeah, we, yeah, so we, in fact...
So we will be giving their phone numbers?
We're, we're going to have some supports that if question, you know, students have questions or families have questions, that you'll be able to access, kind of like live, like you might have, you know, a number you could call and say, I really don't understand, you know, I'm in 10th grade, I'm doing the 10th grade English assignment. I don't understand what you want us to do in section number two. And there would be a teacher who would be available to talk through, to help you, to provide support. High school students, we might be able to email you some supplemental documents, send you to, you know, websites. know, websites and that kind of thing. But, but again, I, again, I don't want to give anyone the illusion that we've got, you know, the next three weeks planned and figured out. We do not. We do not. But we're not going to wait to implement this. We're going to get to work early tomorrow. Teachers have already been working on this. The administrators have been working on this all weekend, and we will be ready to go. But tomorrow, you can expect an English assignment.
Are we getting that English assignment on Moodle?
Yes.
We are? Okay. And what about students who, like, need the mental support from the school?
So we, and, and Mrs. Lewis would be the one to speak to this, but it's really important for us to make sure that kids have the counseling support that they access at, at all of our schools. And part of what we're still working on is how you might be able to have almost like office hours, or like a phone appointment, or something like that, where you could call in and you could talk to your counselor, you could make sure that you have support. I don't know if we might be able to do some of the small groups that we do as a conference call. Those, you know, you might be able to come in for some of those services down the road.
Okay.
But we're working really hard to make sure, I think now more than ever, kids are going to need support. Families are anxious, kids are nervous. This is, you know, an unprecedented time, you know, certainly in, in my lifetime, that I've never seen anything like this. Scott and I were talking about this the other day. He was talking about 9/11 and the impact of growing up in Brooklyn and his family being impacted. You know, I, I think back on, I mean, they're just really, there aren't a lot of examples of anything that comes quite close to this. So we want to help, we want to make sure we're supporting all kids, and that would include counseling services.
All right, okay, thank you, that was all.
Thanks for your questions.
Thank you, Alyssa. Yes, Scott?
Yeah, if I may, there's going to be a lot of questions, and, and things are, are moving rapidly, and, and our administration has just done a, an unbelievable job in terms of, you know, capturing a lot of information. We are going to have an FAQ, a frequently asked questions document, hopefully either tonight or by tomorrow, that will address a lot of things. It's not going to address everything, and what I want everyone to focus in on, this is going to be an evolving document. So as we get more questions, we will post those questions and then those responses. I would ask for parents in the community to be patient and hold off tomorrow on some of these questions. Review the documents online as best you can. We will communicate through social media, through the website, through GTV. We will do everything in our, in our power to communicate and inform the school and the greater community. So I just wanted to let you know, know that. Please look to the website first. Secondly, I, I just wanted to say that we have a really strong community in both Goffstown and New Boston, and the partnership between those two communities is just incredibly profound. And I think that collectively, to get through this, it's going to require a lot of love, compassion, and just teamwork. And if that means taking care of somebody's kids, if that means donating money to the food bank, to the food pantry, or to the church in New Boston that deals with, with that, I think this is an opportunity for us to come together as two communities, and we're going to come through this strong. It's going to be a little bit challenging, no one's, no one's debating that, but through crisis sometimes comes really good things, and I think this is an opportunity for us to show that.
Thank you, Scott.
I would totally agree. And if I can add one more piece, and with respect to frequently asked questions, Adam McKeon, who again, I, I can't give enough praise, this community is so lucky to have him as our GTV coordinator. Adam is ready to do a sort of live show with people being able to submit questions on YouTube. He offered to do it tonight. I told him that I thought we probably had a little too much going on, but I love the format, I love the ability that, you know, a couple of us could be in the studio and people could submit questions to us on YouTube, and we could respond to them live and record that. So that is something that I'm committed to doing in a couple of days. You know, again, there's a lot of details here, you know, for our students, for our faculty, and we're going to need a little bit of time. I think Mr. Gross was, was very perceptive. Give us a little bit of your patience, we'll figure this out, we'll keep working at it, and we'll release more resources as we can. But, you know, we're going, we're going to make sure that we communicate everything that we're doing with the greater community and all of our parents.
Okay. Is there any other public comment before I close it? No? All right, well, I close public comment. Thank you all for coming out. Thank you all to our administration, thank you to our board members who have come out today for all the information, we appreciate it. If there's nothing else, then I'll take a motion to adjourn.
To adjourn?
By Alan, second. By Ginny. Okay, roll call again.
Yes.
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 Wendy?
Yes, thank you.
Janelle?
Yes, thank you.
Retta?
Yes.
Thank you, and yes. So we are adjourned, thank you.
Hand sanitizer on the table, everybody.